Okay, I'd like to start the December, oh man, I totally messed this up. October 8th, 2024, Planning Board Meeting for the City of Auburn. I'll start with Agenda Item Number One with Roll Call from my left.
Amanda Garrett.
Dave Trask.
Paul Jacques.
Bob Hayes.
Riley Bergeron.
Darren Finnegan.
And it looks like we have six people here, so there's three people absent. Tim DeRoche, Stacy LeBlanc, and our newest Associate Member, Maureen Hopkins. So I will elevate Amanda to a voting member this evening. We'll still need four votes to pass something, right?
That is correct.
Okay, oh, that would be a majority anyway, so it wouldn't matter in that case. Okay, Item Two on the Agenda, the Meeting Minutes from September 10th. Do I have any amendments to the Meeting Minutes? Nope. Okay, so I'll seek a motion to approve.
Oops.
Seconded.
All those in favor? And Item Number Three on the Agenda is an appointment by the Planning Board Chair to appoint a Planning Board Member to the Sustainability and Natural Resource Management Committee, commonly known as SNRB. Do you want to tell us a little bit more about the responsibilities and the schedule of that?
Yeah, so we provided a little breakdown in your packets that kind of listed out what this board is. It's basically to improve the relationship and communication between the City Council, existing communities, and staff with the aim of creating a more effective organization of the city's sustainability efforts. The board consists of six members, City Council, Planning Board, and four standing working groups on agriculture, conservation, and community forest and sustainability. The Planning Board Chair, I believe Stacy's already on this board or is it the other board?
So we're gonna, we're gonna appoint somebody to this board, an active member. We've got to have active participation from the Planning Board and SNRB.
And it's three-year terms. We're thinking that it would be, we put once per month in the staff report when we looked at the schedule online for previous meetings. There's two different ones, but for previous meetings, it looked like it was like four meetings a year, so every three months or so there was a meeting. So I think that's the most information we have at this time.
Anybody willing to step up? Just Bob? Okay. Anybody have an objection to Bob being on? I didn't think so. Okay. Any, all those in favor of Bob joining the SNRB? You're it. Thank you for doing that. We do need good representation on these committees on there. And Item Four is for the Planning Board Chair to appoint a Planning Board Member to the Mayor's Ad-Hoc Committee on Bonafide Agricultural, Recreational, and Natural Resources Land Use Committee. And again, could you tell us a little bit more about this?
Yeah, so this one, I apologize for the confusion. This is the new committee that the City Council just created at their September 16th meeting. It is to develop a criteria to use for determining if a business or land use, if implemented, will constitute a bona fide farming, agricultural, recreational, or natural resource use pursuant to our city ordinances. And the membership is, it's pretty similar to the last one. The Chair of the Sustainability and Natural Resources Board, which is the board that we just discussed, two representatives of the Natural Products and Agriculture Working Group, Conservation Working Group Member, Member from the Community Forest Working Group, Member from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and then the Planning Board Member as designated by the Chair of the Board, and City Staff.
Yeah, and just to add a little bit more to this, you know, staff is really struggling with the, you know, reviewing the farm plans and really getting the definition of a bona fide farm. You know, as you, most of you know that we got rid of the, the language for income standards, but we're, we're still trying to struggle particularly with the smaller lots. A lot of the small lots that want to be developed in the Ag Zone, in the RP Zone, Ag RP Zone, it's, it's difficult to get a bona fide farm in, in a location like that. So they're trying to come up with a clearer definition for staff, maybe some, some baseline review criteria, and just to make sure that we're consistent as we provide recommendations, you know, to the applicant that's applying for a farm and farm plan. And ultimately, you know, the goal for a lot of these, you know, lots is that they want to build a home. And, you know, the farm has to be secondary to the, to the home. It's not the primary use, it's got to be the farm, so, or recreation or natural resource uses. Again, I think some of the bigger lots, you know, 10 to 15 acres and greater are easier. It's some of these smaller lots, half-acre lots, we're even down to quarter-acre lots in some instances, two acres, three acres, six acres, seven acres, some of it being forested. And then when they say they want to have a farm, there's got to be a clear process there. How do you get from point A to point B? And it's really nice to have this, this group kind of work with, with me in particular, I think I'll be the one that's appointed, but to kind of lay out the process for that. I'd like to see a nice process so it's clear to, you know, potential homeowners and landowners in the Ag and RP Zone.
I have a ton of questions about this, but I think we'll leave it to the committee to deliberate over these, because I'm sure there's a lot of considerations that other people need to chime in on to really get the big picture as to what the challenges are for that. Is there anybody that would like to step up for that?
I have a, I am, but I have a couple of questions first, well, it's just from a clarifying perspective. Is this really designed initially to get the definition forward to you, John, so that you have it, and then being ad hoc, it is no longer? Or is it an actual committee now that will assist you moving forward as applications are presented to you to help guide whether or not it is or isn't?
I think that's, I think that's to be determined by, I think it's a good question, legitimate question, you bringing a good point forward. I think that's something that the ad hoc committee has to decide, and, you know, we're going to go on the direction, I'm going to go on the direction of the City Manager on that, and, you know, what the overall direction the ad hoc committee is. I think for right now, it's, it's developing the criteria, and then staff would be doing it. I don't think we're going to kick it back to a deliberation with a group of people over and over again. But again, that, I think that might be up for discussion, but it's not my understanding that that's what's going to happen. I think it's pretty clear in the text of the, you know, of the ordinance that it's the staff to decide that, so unless we have some additional staff language changes, I don't think that that's going to be necessarily the case. There could be onesie-twosies at the beginning that we, we go back to the board and kind of consult with, so we're all on the same page. But I think at the end of the day, it's going to be, we're going to create the guidance, and then we're gonna, you know, we'll move, we'll move forward from there so staff can take over. It could be, it could be very inconsistent when you get, you know, a bunch of different people on there, but again, I'm going to remain open to the direction that we go.
Okay. Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, because to me, setting the guidance and then revisiting it on occasion to see if it needs to be modified, but allowing that to be within your purview versus a rotating group's purview, I think to me is very important. So I appreciate the, the answer on that. I also wanted to just kind of, for me, we've done a lot of work in this area and felt that we've done a lot of work to try to define what a lot of these things are. So where there's gray areas or struggles, you know, I'd like to be involved in helping solve those, so.
That's exactly, you know, you heard from me, some of the struggles that I've had with staff was the smaller lots, and, and I'm hoping that we get some, you know, some clear criteria for that moving forward.
Well, lots of change and some open can of worms that have come up with rezoning something or re, redefining the zones with existing lots, so thank you for clarifying that a little bit better. And Dave, you said you were willing to?
Yes.
Step up for that. Okay, is anybody else? Okay, so are we all in favor then of Dave being our representative? Good, thank you, Dave. And, okay, we've got six or seven or eight votes to make here tonight, so we'll get rolling on these. Item Five on the Agenda is a public hearing for a site plan review on the T-hangers that was postponed from the last meeting.
Yep, we got the public hearing out properly, public notices. Before I get started, I wanted to introduce Natalie.
Of course.
Our planning, our new planning coordinator that's with us. She's actually going to be presenting the, the last LD 2003 in the communities that she came from, Brunswick, and the other community was, help me out, please, New Gloucester. She went through that process with them, so it's going to be nice to have her experience on that. So she'll be presenting the workshop pieces that have been basically brought down through the City Manager's Office that we're going to share with the board later today. But moving on to number five, public hearing. Fielding Properties LLC is applying for a site plan approval for the phased construction of a four 6,500 square foot one-story hangars with utilities, parking, stormwater management features, and other associated permits on Flightline Drive and Aviation Avenue, also known as Parcel ID 143007. So just to clarify a little bit, if you look up on the screen there, it's essentially the green square for this particular project. We have two hangar projects. I know, I just wanted to get that squared away and upfront, not to be confused, one's a hangar, T-hanger project, and then the other one's, and there's three on the T-hanger, and then the regular hangar project, there's four. And there's different consultants for each of those, and those consultants are here today. As you'll hear, some very consistent language on both of these projects. One is that they're asking for a waiver under our landscape ordinance, you know, because of FAA requirements, they, you know, we really want to minimize the amount of bushes and trees and obstructions for airplanes, obviously, and props and things like that. They have submitted all of their, you know, information for access management, wetlands, stormwater. City Engineering has reviewed the stormwater permit. This is, this particular project is considered a minor amendment under the site, this is, this whole site is under the Site Location and Development Act, the main DEP. So they're basically making a minor amendment to the, to the actuals, what we refer to as SLOTA. There is no particular wetlands on this site. Auburn Water, Auburn Water and Sewer, those items have been identified, and they've updated the utilities map, so they have reviewed, there was, in the original staff report, since that time, there's been some updates to the utility lines and ownership. So that's all been clarified. At the end of the day, it's really the, the bonding inspection fees, and then providing the final sewer and water easement descriptions to the Auburn Water and Sewer District. So those are, those are the two conditions that staff's asking for. I think that the consulting engineer is here, and he could go over the updated utility map and, and any of the site plan questions that Planning Board might have, but if, if Planning Board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So, John, real quick, in the, so we've got a couple of different versions. The one that's dated October 8th in the packet has four provisions on them, so you're saying that we only need to concern ourselves with two of the four?
Am I on the right one?
So we've got one that's dated September 10th, 2024, were printed for October 8th, 2024. That's the most current.
Oh, okay, so this actually must not be five.
Nope, that's the second project.
It's the same map, but a different image, but, okay, I got it. Thank you.
Yeah, and to make it more complicated, I put a, an addendum to the, to the second project that's in the packet that has the project location, and some additional information with site plans that we'll go over for the T-hanger project.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, it looked like the image on the front was the same, so, okay, got it.
Any additional questions? We've got the consulting engineer here.
Good to go. Good evening, my name is Rob McSorling. I'm a Senior Project Manager with Sebego Technics. I'm here representing Fielding Properties LLC and indirectly the Lewiston Auburn Airport. Mr. Fielding, Fielding Properties initially reached out to the airport relative to getting some hangar space on the, on the airport, and what came out of it was the project for one single hangar to be built. Jonathan Labonte, the Airport Director, saw this as an excellent opportunity for the airport, and discusses with the board at the airport, and they came to a joint development agreement with Mr. Fielding to expand it to four hangars versus just the one that Mr. Fielding wanted to have. As stated, each of these hangars are about 6,000, 5,544 square feet each. The location is kind of between the location of the main hangar location and the hangar in some other hangar locations to the south in that green area. We are building next to an existing hangar in that location. This area, that green area encompasses about five acres worth of land there. Our project is going to develop about an acre and a half of that, and we're going to create about 1.2 acres of, in previous area. And as part of our project, we are proposing a gravel wetland for stormwater treatment and stormwater attenuation in performance with the MDOT and the city requirements. Those both, that discharges eventually to Davis Brook and the Lulander Skoggan River, which are not considered to be urban impaired streams, so there, there is no concern there. As stated, we have worked extensively with Auburn and Sewer Water District. Can you go one more map? And this is the prior map, but if I can go over here and I'll speak loud. This water line, the question is to be placed out here, aviation avenue. There were some slight modifications to the gravity sewer lines, and we worked out those issues with the, the district, and we forwarded on that email that showed that we had dealt with those issues. As stated, we are asking for a waiver request along Flightline Drive relative to landscaping in that area. We have a lot of utilities, but also we're concerned about safety and security. Typically, in a situation like this at an airport, you don't want to hide your hangars and whatnot, and so we are requesting that one waiver for the project. Other than that, I think the project is pretty straightforward, and I'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions.
No one has any questions? Okay. Thank you. Some might come up. Okay, are there any more questions for staff? Okay, then I'd like a motion then to open the public comment.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Okay, if you, if anybody wants to speak about this issue, matter, just step up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes to address the board. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor? So, as we don't have any questions to address from the public, we'll just begin deliberation. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to discuss?
I think the waiver, the vegetation waiver makes sense because the location also doesn't have any surrounding vegetation other than the other hangars, so it seems in line, so I don't really have any objection with that waiver.
I agree totally.
I agree as well, and the fact that we have an opportunity to add some additional infrastructure and buildings to the airport, I think is a wonderful opportunity, so I like it.
I agree.
So we need two motions on this, right? I need to approve the waiver and then?
That's correct.
Everything else, okay. So with that, let's, I'm seeking a motion to approve the waiver request.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the waiver request of the dimensional requirements under Section 60-579G, numbers four and five.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. And we'll need the second motion to approve the, it's a site review.
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll continue on then. I make a motion that the proposal meets requirements of Section 60-1277, 60-1336, and 60-771, and I, and approve the site plan by Fielding Properties LLC for the phased construction of four 6,544 square foot one-story hangars, gross 26,176 square feet, utilities, parking, stormwater management features, and other associated improvements on Flightline Drive and Aviation Avenue, also City Assessors Parcel ID 143007. Phase one activities include the construction of Hangar One and part of the associated taxiway, apron, and extension of utilities by the applicant for personal use. The proposed project should be considered pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2, Site Plan Review, Division 3, Special Exception, Division 15, Industrial District, and Delegate a Review for Site Location of Development Act with the following conditions. John, clarify me if we're, if I, we're looking at A and C, correct?
That is correct.
No development activity until any bonding or inspection fees is determined by the Auburn Engineering Department, and provide water and sewer easements to the satisfaction of the Auburn Water and Sewer District.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Item Six on the Agenda is another site plan review, and it is again a postponed one from last month. I don't have any, just, how about staff give us an update on this?
Yeah, so this project is for the construction of four six-unit multifamily residential buildings, a total of 24 units, at 1315 Minnet Ave. The project also includes two 3,000-square-foot, single-story self-storage buildings, which are these rectangular-shaped buildings here. In your staff report, we provided a zoning summary to highlight applicable sections of the ordinance. This is an allowed use for the area, and all of the requirements that are specific to the General Business Zoning District have met. We worked with the applicant to provide a design that meets the city requirements for parking and access management, and also takes into account the site constraints in regards to the wetlands that are back here. As part of the project, the applicant is also proposing to provide an in-lu fee to the city to help construct future sidewalks in this area, which is one of the conditions of approval that you'll see in your staff report. So tonight, you're tasked with conducting the public hearing and reviewing the site plan, special exception criteria, and making the decision on the project, and the applicant is here for any questions that you have that we may not be able to answer, but otherwise, we're happy to answer whatever questions you have.
Is there a special exception in here? I see a lot of standards met, standards met, standards met, and the suggested.
So this, the standards met, these ones are for the zoning considerations and then parking and access management, and ones that are specific to GB2 that aren't covered under that umbrella of special exception and site plan. The special exception site plan criteria are on the back page. The standards met are the ones that specifically address items that are part of this project in terms of the zoning.
Does that answer your question, Dave?
So is the 70,000 in-lu fee the consideration that we're given with regard to the exception that we're asked, that we're looking to give? Because usually we have a, you know, some detailed language as to what we are asking to waive.
So it falls under special exception because it's a multifamily unit.
Okay.
And we basically review it under those standards, so it kicks you under the Section 60-1336. That does pretty typical. That, that's pretty typical for multifamily, multi-unit developments and multifamily suburban. So, under the GB, you get kicked under MFS. So you, you're under the special exception standards at that point. So, yes, stormwater management, access management, all those things are measured against that. So we looked at speed on this roadway on Minut Ave, and we suggested to the engineer that, you know, one way in, one way out to control access on that site was one way to meet the, you know, the evidence that this, this project is safe. In addition to that, we looked at things like lessening slopes. The engineer can go over it, lessening slopes to, you know, minimize impacts to wetlands. The, the rare of the site, it's got significant wetlands, wetlands of what's considered, wetlands of special significance. So those are some of the mitigation features that, you know, that the, the site did. And certainly, the board is more than willing to ask any kind of question in terms of safety or standards that are imposed with the development of the project. And we should, you know, we even looked at the width of the entrances to meet certain standards for, for roadways and entrance ways. So, and we have the consulting engineer here to, to, you know, answer any additional questions.
Our ordinance does, just to add a little bit more color to it, our ordinance does have standards that are specific to recreation and open space for residential development projects such as this. And so, the conversation about the in-lu fee going towards the future sidewalk is in part because of those requirements in the ordinance and trying to address a way for this project to contribute to the recreation and open space by providing either something on the site or something off the site that the city feels would be needed in this area. So that is why they came up with the sidewalk.
Can I add on to that?
Yes.
This property, it doesn't abut, but it corners with the city park up there. It, it would be a great way to have a third, well, and soon to be a second access up into that park. Is that something that you'd be open to?
We would. The issue, I think, would be, the issue we would have would be extensive crossing of wetlands and to do so. If there's a high-level area that we could cut a trail through.
Yeah.
Without actually having wetland impact, excavation, et cetera, around.
Absolutely.
We'd be open to that.
Okay. So I think that would also add value to your property as well for tenants and things like that. But another way in and helping other development on that corridor to be able to access that park from Minut Ave instead of the, going up Patch Road and stuff.
Pardon me. The only issue with it is, more or less, this is an island of opulent area on the entire lot.
Right.
That we have available to us. And it's, it's fairly isolated. It, it, it isn't quite down to, I believe it's Cook's Corner.
No, it's not. No, there's another triangle of property.
To the west, there's an intersection that, anyways. So we're, we're sort of centered in the middle of our lot with limited ability to construct something here. We, we did so with the idea of minimizing impervious areas, and as Linder mentioned, reducing the slopes in the rear yard. So we've played with the driveway grades to get the backyards to kind of work really well and provide no impact to the wetlands. I do have a little bit of tree clearing in the back, but aside from that, I'm not touching any wetlands with any grading or land disturbance. So, I'd ideally like to avoid that, but again, we're open to pretty much anything that.
Right. Okay. Well, hopefully, the transportation director is listening and eventually, anyway. And I know the Complete Streets Committee would be interested in seeing something like that too, for the connectivity.
Certainly, the connectivity with the requirements for the in-lu fee could be, I think the transportation director will have some flexibility on that. We would have to go back to the consultant and the owner. But if there's a connectivity piece that makes more sense, and there's, it could be, we do a long-term planning, it could be many, many years before the sidewalk connection happens. It could, could make sense that we spend this money on permitting and make that, you know, the connection piece. But that's, we could leave that open as a, something that the in-lu fee for sidewalks and trails, maybe we could just add the word "trail." It's a suggestion to the planning board so that the city has a little bit of flexibility in the future, how, you know, how to spend that and what makes most sense for, you know, for our planning activity to recreation and sidewalk connectivity.
Would that be something to add on to the motion or just leave it as is in this?
Yep. We could add it right on to the motion.
Okay. So we'll need a little bit of help with the language on that.
Yeah. So it's just sidewalks or trails.
Or trails.
Okay.
Or trails. Yep. That's it.
And we would have no objection whatsoever.
Thank you. I, I live right near there, so I know it would help a lot of people accessing that area that would rather not go up there and park and would just ride their bike from their home and get right into the park, especially with the Garfield Road entrance being closed, will be closed at some point.
I think it'd be a great amenity for the project as well, so.
Yep. And, any other questions for the developer? And staff, are you finished with your?
That's all I have. We're happy to answer any additional questions. Again, the engineer's here to answer any additional technical questions that you might have.
Looks like we're good. Okay. Thank you. So I'd like to seek a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? If anybody would like to speak, please step up to the podium and state your name and address, and you have five minutes to address the board. Seeing none, seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. So, does anybody on the board have any need for discussion or deliberation? Does anybody have anything to add?
Just as a thought, I don't know how useful adding trails in would be if it is that landlock. If they can put a trail on the side of the road, wouldn't you rather have a sidewalk? I feel like, I don't know if trail, just because of the feature, the geological features of the lot might make that inclusion of trails an unnecessary addition to our motion.
Yeah. I guess I'd, I'd like the opportunity for the city and the Streets Committee, if they determine for one reason or another that they'd rather do one or the other, or maybe split a little bit. I like the, the opportunity to allow the, the city to make that determination.
I guess my thought is that a trail might not offer the same protection as like a curb of a sidewalk, and that might allow, I don't know. That was just my thought.
I guess just response to both. I don't think it, one precludes the other, actually. Maybe that if, if it ties in by sidewalk, if there's another development or whatever adjacent, at the same time, if there's a possibility of easily putting a trail up into the park area, one or both could occur.
There is a study going on, on Minut Ave, right? From there all the way up to the Rotary and even further, right?
That's correct. Yeah. I think Jonathan covered that in the last meeting. So, the, the thought is, is that, you know, they really want to make that a more walkable, slow the traffic down, and figure out ways to slow the traffic down. And certainly, the sidewalk is gonna, you know, help assist in that. You know, the, the suggestion with the trail is that there's a park behind, you know, that creating that connectivity and keeping that open in the future. By putting it in the, you know, the condition, it, it just leaves the door open for, for any future development and conversation that was left, you know, in a public meeting that, that could be traced for many, many years if something, an opportunity came in the future that we don't really know about yet, so.
Also, I guess if, I'll redact my earlier, if it's seventy thousand dollars and, and the city gets it, then I'm sure they'll use it in the, the best way, as long as it's a set number and not something that can be reduced instead of it, because it's a trail instead of a sidewalk. But, so, I'm fine with it.
I also think you could address that by saying as determined by city staff, so that that process is clear, so that they can't come forward and propose a seventy thousand dollar trail connection if that's not necessarily what is outlined in the process going forward. That might be a good amendment to that motion. Cover that.
So if we just include it in the motion as another condition, it should work? Or add the word and, and trails or whatever? Okay.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, are we ideally saying and/or, and/or trails?
Okay.
Give them the most flexibility.
Approved by city staff.
Yeah. Where did, where, where was the proposal for the city staff language? Like where, where in the sentence?
It's not in the staff report. It was something that I suggested, yeah, you could add in.
Do you have a suggestion as to where in the sentence you would put it?
So, seventy thousand dollar in-lu fee for future sidewalks and/or trails, as determined by city staff, shall be paid by the first certificate of occupancy.
Thank you.
That sounds excellent.
Just a question. Where does the seventy thousand dollars go as far as an account?
So there's a, there's a sidewalk fee, there's a sidewalk match account that we're setting up. So, as the transportation director, Jonathan, presented last month, they're looking for grant money to do, to do some of this work. And oftentimes, we've got to come up with match on that work. So, most of the time, this, this, the in-lu fees are set up to be used as the match that the city's required to come up with. So we're going after additional federal and state funding. And, you know, you could use MDOT funding, there could be federal highway funding, there could be ACF trail funding, so agriculture, conservation, forestry, those departments. There could be EDA money. So there's all kinds of different RD money, or CDBG money, there could be, it just goes on forever, I'm sorry. But it's just be used as match, and we'll, that's how we try to earmark the in-lu fees.
So is there a certain amount that's already in such an account? Or is this the first?
There's, there's some amounts that are, I don't know the, the number. There is, there is an account, there's accounting for it. And I know that this is something that they're, you know, working on to make sure that it's more clear. I think that's something that Jonathan's gonna be heading up to, because this is something that's relatively new in our processes, and we just want to make sure that the money doesn't get spent or get earmarked in the general fund. It's, we certainly want to earmark it specifically for the, for a project.
I have a follow-up on that. So is it earmarked, so is this seventy thousand earmarked for this specific project? Or is the greater thing earmarked as batching for, for sidewalk things? Or is, is, so every, is every addition to that account earmarked for the project that it was approved for, or is it just a general fund used for that purpose?
No. It's gonna, it's gonna go for enhancements in this location. So, not, not in the general fund. It should go to a specific project that's identified in the CIP that comes out of some of the studies that Jonathan's working on that he, that he identified, so.
Let me ask the question a different way. Seventy thousand would then be at some point used for a sidewalk here? Or could, or would it potentially be in a different area, the city that needs a sidewalk? Because we're leveraging those funds.
So let me just give you an example. We get, we're gonna do the whole Minut Ave, it could include sidewalk projects, but it could include tightening up the roadway, you know, doing different things that slow traffic down. The, you know, we might get three million dollars of federal funding, and then we, we need a certain percentage, ten percent or twenty percent. So that would get pushed into the match of the total project. So we would be addressing items that's along that corridor. And it's, it's not like specifically drilled right down to that penny being spent on that sidewalk directly in front of the project, but it's part of a bigger, bigger picture, addressing larger areas with, with bigger sums of federal match.
Okay. Yeah. Now, that, that makes sense, and I mean, it sort of, it covers sort of that area. And it wouldn't be that suddenly there's a sidewalk on a different street that's, had been leveraged by that funds. Okay.
It kind of takes away from our, the importance of specifying if it's trails or streets, if it can be used for whatever that fund's gonna be using it for. Right? If we, if we're saying it's for sidewalks and trails, and we're talking, and that language matters, but it can actually be used for tightening up the street, you know, a quarter mile down the street, what's the point of putting this condition, language condition in there?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so. But at the end of the day, where the intention is to have sidewalks in this location, so using sidewalk, sidewalk language, I think, is, is appropriate in this particular case. But there could be more work associated with that. But at the end of the day, the target would be to have sidewalks. So we would definitely want to have sidewalks in this location.
And it gets on the public record and Jonathan's notes, or the transportation director's notes for ideas. He's pretty thorough.
Yes. Should we tighten it up even further with respect to the seventy thousand on or adjacent to the site in question?
I, I think so. I mean, I don't know if it's gonna make a difference one way or the other. Again, it's, it, it's usually for match for larger projects. We have an in-lu fee for the other project that we did last month, and we have eight million dollars. We had an eight million dollar earmark for sidewalks along that corridor on that other roadway. The, the name of the road's up in my mind at the moment, but, you know, and that was only thirty-seven thousand dollars. I, you know, where that money's gonna be spent along, could be three miles of new sidewalk, it's really hard to say. I don't know if it would be a hundred percent correct by giving, drilling it down and being more specific, but if that's what the planning board chooses for language, you know, I'm, I'm in support of it. I'm not gonna.
Anyone that would trace, trace back to figure out where the in-lu fee came from would ultimately end up at the recreation and open space standards, which are very specific to a project that will support the residents of, I apologize, a fee or some sort of project to support the residents of this specific development. So that's very clearly spelled out in the ordinance. So I think that that kind of covers what you're alluding to with adding a little more clarity to the motion, but that, you know, it's up to you. That just, I think it's clear in the ordinance that it has to be for this project, the residents of this project.
Everyone all set now? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Then I'll seek a motion for item six.
I make a motion that the proposal meets the requirements of section 60-1277, 60-1336, and 60-771, and approve the site plan to construct four multifamily residential buildings consisting of six units each for a total of 24 residential units and two additional 3,000 square foot, single-story self-storage buildings, paved, drive, aisles, sidewalks, and parking at 315 mine lab, also city assessors parcel ID 205-012, the proposed project should be considered pursuant to chapter 60, article 16, division 2, site plan review, division 3, special exception, and article 4, division 13, mine and ab, general business to district, with the following conditions, that no development activity until any bonding or inspection fees is determined by the Auburn Engineering Department, and that a $70,000 in lieu fee for future sidewalks and/or trails, as determined by city staff, shall be paid by the first certificate of occupancy.
Any discussion?
Maybe just a question, I, reading the, one of the diagrams, it's listed as storage, garage structure, in the motion, talking self-storage building. You know, I guess when I looked at the plan, I kind of took it as probably garage and storage for occupants, I see self-storage, I get fearful of it's, could be outside storage.
Well, it's intended entirely for the residents primarily, to provide them additional space, however, it could be used for other people who wanted to, not necessarily restricted to residents, but I don't believe they'll, there is no intention to have outside storage, nothing outside of the building itself.
Now, that was my question, was it for tenants, the occupants of the units there, or possible self-storage for people not necessarily residing there?
I think it's not restricted to residents only at this point in time.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but what is, is there a specific unit number attached to each, so we're not creating one giant storage building, correct? There's dividers, so they're small, enough for a vehicle, probably and some personal items, you could always add residential storage to the, the motion as well, to ensure that, but it was our understanding that it would be used as a garage space and/or storage for the residents that live in the complex.
I would move an amendment to the motion to clarify self-storage buildings for occupants of the development.
Seconded. Okay, so let's vote on the amendment first. All those in favor? The amendment carries, so now we can vote on the original motion. Any discussion on that? Okay, so we'll vote on the motion that Riley put forth on the site plan. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say, it's been a pleasure working with the staff in the town, or the city, we don't do a lot of work here, and it's been a great experience for us, our questions were answered promptly, and we hope to come back soon.
Thank you. Okay, item seven on the agenda is a public hearing for another site plan review at the airport, and I would open it up to staff to tell us a little bit more about this.
Yeah, we went, go to the additional information. So this is, the Auburn Lewiston Municipal Airport is applying for a site plan approving the construction of three new T-hangers. If you recall the site plan or the aerial photo that you were looking at before, it's the, it's the site to the south, that is this particular one here, the red one here that ties back into the runway, this is a taxi line on Flight Line Drive, same thing, parcel ID 137, 143007. We consider this against chapters 60 and division 2, site plan review, division 3, special exception, division 15, industrial district, and again, delegated review for Site Location Development Act. Same thing here, this is an amendment to the Site Location Development Act. I do, we, we're gonna skip right through to our packets, I think the, the, the biggest piece is the supplemental information that I sent to you guys, it's got the proposed project area, I'd like to, I'd like to cover that with the board specifically, I think it gets down into the meat of the, of the approval, I certainly would be open to any additional questions, but I want to go through this specifically. One is that the applicant submitted a letter on October 2nd requesting a landscape waiver of 65794, and you know, the section lines four and five, very similar to the last project that we approved. They are not, in addition to that, they had some new road alignment, the original plan had a different entranceway, so, you know, a lot of this money is earmarked through grant funding, and they had to do some value engineering, so they had a slight turn into the accessway, so they straightened that roadway out. Do we have a plan that could show that perhaps?
Oh.
As you, as you can see from the drawing here, that the roadway has been straightened out significantly from the original packet, even though this information was in your original packet, I just want to point it out that it's not original to the, to the first submission packet that you may be looking at for the overall project. In addition, they updated a utility plan to reflect Auburn and Sewer and Water District request and review, so this really eliminates a lot of the conditions on the approval. They updated grading and drainage and erosion control plan, they, they didn't have, originally they didn't have a real good temporary erosion control plan, so staff really wanted the engineer to kind of nail that out, and they provided that. And they originally had some utility easements, and they've separated the utility that it's singular, and what I mean is that there's just one water service going to each building, one sewer service, there's not multiple, PUC would require the Water District and the Sewer District to get easements along those areas, so what we did from the public right away, we put singular lines into that, and the engineer updated that plan for us. So, staff has basically just one condition, we feel like the project is certainly meeting all the requirements, but with one condition, but two motions, one is for the waiver, and again, one is the project overall, and the condition is the bonding requirement from the city engineer, so I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
John, this is the first time I've seen archaeologically sensitive area on any of our maps, do we have certain setbacks or things that we're required to consider when we have those, and what actually is this one?
So, there's, there's certain standards with the State Historic Preservation Office that requires to put safety fencing up, the city is moving forward with what's considered a phase two or phase three archaeological study, that's something that they're moving on. We kind of, in the resubmission and in my presentation, we kind of downplayed that, we, it's, it is public information, but at the same time, once it's been identified, the State Historic Preservation Office doesn't necessarily like to advertise it, there's actually state law that really minimizes the amount of information that's given, because I can tell you that from my experience as a National Park Ranger, our number one thing was people stealing artifacts and things, that essentially, all this stuff belongs to the public. So, we want to have a good study, Jonathan's got a good study, gonna have a good study out there, and make sure that we know, the engineer can talk about some of their BMPs, best management practices, where they've, you know, increased the slopes, they've installed riprap during the construction, they'll have monitoring available, it's part of the Site Location and Development Act, they'll have requirements and conditions of having somebody on board when they excavate through that area, they want to make sure that they're not running into anything, and if they do, they've got to stop the work, and they've got to address it, and contact the state, so there's a process for this.
Okay.
And we, we, staff did this, I will be blunt and say, kind of on purpose, because of state law, we're trying to protect the, the information that could or could be there, could or could not be there, so, I don't know if there's anything in the ground, no one knows, but they are moving forward with a little, with the additional studies.
Okay, so basically, the, we don't necessarily know if there are other things in this area, but as we excavate and start to do, they'll be on the lookout for any of those things? Okay?
Yep, that's part of the Site Location Development Act, that'll be a condition of that approval from the city engineer coming from staff.
I can add in too, my name is Sydney Seeny, I'm one of the engineers on this project, and we did have a whole site cleared and checked for archaeological, and that's the location where they identified it as potentially sensitive, so the remainder of the project where we're building has been checked out, and we have a five-foot buffer off of that area that we will not go within, and there'll be a construction fence around the limits of that to prevent anybody from entering into that sensitive area.
Excellent, thank you for that additional.
Are there any more questions? Did you have anything you wanted to add to the staff report or anything?
I think it's pretty straightforward, as we're permitting three hangers, the intent is to build the one within the near future, the one that's the slightly darker gray, as John mentioned, we shifted the site, essentially the changes from what you'd seen before is there's just less taxi lane pavement, we kind of just fine-tuned the grading and reduced the construction costs as well, as well as providing a more direct route for pilots to get to the hangers, and then I think the biggest thing, the landscaping waivers, one thing, but I think everywhere else, connecting into all public utilities, we've met with Central Main Power, confirmed that we have the capacity to tie into their utility poles that are up the road, so everything has been pretty straightforward.
Okay, I'm pretty ignorant in this department, can you explain what the difference between the square hangers and these T-hangers?
The T-hangers are, the shape is literally a T, so they're nested into one another, so you'd have like two offset where the leg of the T kind of go into one another, so if you looked at this in scale, there'd be like, you could enter on one side of the hanger, there'd be five, and on the other side, they're nested together, and there's five more, so the square one is just one giant space, essentially.
Doesn't impact anything. Any more questions for staff? Okay, we'll seek a motion then to open public comment.
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor? Okay. Is anybody seeking to address the board? Step up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes to address the board. Okay, seeing none, I'll seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Okay. And now I'll open it up for deliberation.
I guess if this was approved, I know previously, I think it was about two months ago, we had extended it to have the project start within 24 months instead of the 12, with them not having to come back for a review. With the first one starting sooner than the second two, would that be something that you recommend that we add into our motion, or?
There's, there's federal funding tied to this first project, so I think it'll get, I think we're gonna see them hit the go button within the next year, so.
Okay.
Okay, so no more deliberation? Questions? Okay, I'll seek a motion then to approve item seven, or not approve?
Do we need two motions?
Yes, we do, sorry, we need the waiver. So a motion first to approve the waiver.
I make a motion to approve the waiver requested, the dimensional requirements under section 60-7, excuse me, 579G numbers four and five.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, the waiver is approved, and then we need the second motion to approve the site plan.
I make a motion that the approval, the proposal meets the requirements of the section 60-1277, 60-1336, and 60-771, and approve the site plan application of the Auburn Lewiston Municipal Airport LEW provided by McFarland Johnson, Inc., for the phased construction of four 11,220 square foot, one-story hangers, utilities, taxi area, stormwater management features, and other associated improvements on the airport taxiway, also city assessors parcel ID 143-007, the proposed project should be considered pursuant on to chapter 60, article 16, division 2, site plan review, division 3, special exception, division 15, industrial district, and delegated review for Site Location Development Act with the following conditions, no development activity until any bonding or inspection fees is determined by the Auburn Engineering Department.
All those in favor? Oh, we had a discussion?
David, this is what we talked about, it's a typo on this, three hangers versus four.
I amend my proposal for the phased construction of three 11,200 square foot, one-story hangers, utilities. Sorry.
I need a second.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment? And then back to the original motion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight, this is a public hearing for a text amendment for the uses of Conex boxes, trailers, et cetera, that we've talked about for the three meetings or so. And can staff review the final language a little bit and any changes that we made?
Yeah, so um, I might be able to zoom in on this a little bit. So the section of the ordinance that we're working with right now is in regards to all manufactured housing, trailer, office trailers, and it identifies where they're allowed and kind of what they can be used for. So we made um, some amendments to this with the recommendation and suggestions from the planning board about how to include tractor trailer bodies, Conex boxes, and those sorts of things under the manufactured housing umbrella. Ultimately, what um, the process led to was this draft amendment to the ordinance that is before you as a public hearing item that will eventually go before city council as well. And what we've done is um, the final edits, number 12 here, we removed the text at the end that says and does not include tractor trailer bodies, cargo containment boxes, or railroad cars, because we've addressed them separately below in items 14 and 15. So the planning board wanted specific items in the ordinance in regards to limiting the size of them and ensuring that there's a permitting process through the code enforcement so we know where these are and have some sort of control over what they look like and the like. So the text that we ended up with, shipping containers or Conex boxes used as a storage space for non-hazardous materials which are not visible from a public way or a neighboring property that has an allowed use. Shipping containers or Conex boxes which are altered in appearance to resemble the characteristics of surrounding structures are excluded from visibility requirements. So essentially, if you want to put a shipping container or a Conex box on your property, if it's in your backyard, shielded from the public road, it's okay. If it's not, it needs to be altered so that it looks similar to the surrounding neighborhood. So the siding that's on your house would be optional for, I don't know how they side metal containers, but that's not my problem. So something like that, um, just to, so it looks cohesive among the community. Yeah. And then um, we limited the size of them to 320 square feet, which I think um, John actually did the math and the research on storage boxes and Conex boxes and came, that's kind of like the ideal max size, I think, that that research kind of led to.
It's, it's the average size. It's not the biggest one that's allowed, but it's the average size Conex box that you typically see that are unfortunately all around the city right now, but at least we'll have a process to address it um, with folks.
And then the last edit that we put in here were the railroad cars and tractor trailer bodies, um, which are not visible from a public way or a neighboring property are allowed, but only for agricultural and industrial uses. So there won't be tractor trailer bodies i- on a residential property that look like a house, but are actually a tractor trailer body. So we tried to kind of rule out that scenario with number 15 here. Um, I, if there are any edits, this is an awesome way to kind of get those on this paper. Um, so if anybody wants some clarification or wants to edit any of these items, we can certainly do that and kind of work with the text here. Um, hopefully, since we've had the workshops, we're kind of all set with it, but that's an option if for some reason there's something in here that we're still not 100% on. So just let me know.
Uh, I guess I have one question. For people that currently have the Conex boxes on their properties, are they going to have a certain amount of days to like register them? Or is this just new ones going forward? And they, if they said, this has been on my property for three years and there hasn't been a problem, but now it is, is there going to be something that regulates that?
So that's a, that's an enforcement issue um, that the city's dealing with. So currently, right now, the Conex boxes aren't allowed. Um, so there, everyone that has one essentially is in violation. Um, there's just so many of them uh, through the city that it's, you know, we only have so many staff hours in a day. But there's a good utility to them. A lot of people find them very helpful and useful. This just provides a clear direction if they're, you know, that gives them an opportunity to permit that Conex box. Um, I think our staff will identify the locations, let people know. Um, once we go through the, the process of getting this, you know, getting the language approved through council, then we'll, there'll be a time limit where we're gonna go start identifying them and starting out. We'll probably draft up a form letter that gives them a process to get it done and they'll have a certain amount of time to address it by then, so they can come in. Typically, the letters are between 30 and 60 days. Sometimes they're 45, so it depends where, where we land and how code addresses it and, you know, we'll probably go on the direction of Eric, given that there's so many, there might, it might be a little bit more towards 60 days, but we'll, we'll, we'll address that as staff.
I just didn't know if there should be a subcategory for current in violation.
There's, there's already a process set up for that.
That we should be policing that, but I don't know.
Asked this question last time too, and I guess I'm still not assured, uh, one way or the other, referring to 14, are we talking again just commercial industrial properties?
Not 100%. There's, there, they could utilize a Conex box um, in a residential area, but there's special rules that it has to be out of the line of sight of the abutters. And then if, if they're gonna use a Conex box and if it is in the line of the sight of a butters or the roadway, then they've got to do, um, they've got to do significant screening or building it, putting a facade on it that looks like um, like their adjacent home or like, or a light garage or something like that. So they've got to kind of blend it into the, into the environment of the surrounding area.
And be under 320 square feet.
But that still could be eight by 40, 40-foot expanse wall space. Would this fit in 4.2B?
Um, it would as an accessories.
Well, we have the manufactured housing overlay. That's a blanket over this, I believe.
Say again?
There was a state law that was passed in August that essentially um, requires us to allow manufactured housing on any lot that allows single-family housing.
A requirement under 4.2B has to do with windows and doors and so forth.
Right, but this would be considered an accessory um, building, not necessarily a uh, a dwelling. So this is accessory structure and they have different requirements. They have to be, you know, 20 feet back from the roadway. That's the standard in, in some of the form-based code. So they, it could be allowed in those locations and we could apply this ordinance language to those locations in the form-based code.
Actually, remembering back to the last meeting, I guess the answer to my first question tonight is different from what I heard last time.
So you're saying we, we said that these were not allowed in, in the form-based code?
No, I understood that these were being allowed primarily or for commercial industrial use. The distinction that we made going to 15 was that uh, storage boxes that we're really speaking of are on the ground, that in a farming situation, uh, a tra- you know, a used trailer or rail, rail car could be used.
Yeah, and, and in that instance, um, that, that is correct. Railroad cars and tractor trailer bodies are specific to industrial and ag uses.
So if you were to use one as a primary dwelling unit, it would have to have windows cut into it and be 15 feet from the roadway and?
Yeah, so they, if you were gonna use it as a primary, if you're gonna use Conex boxes as a primary residence and retrofit that to housing, then you would have to meet the form-based code requirements.
I, I still have difficulty, yes, with these con- these boxes being used uh, in residential areas, particularly now where we're beginning to allow additional structures on same size. Parcels are not requiring more space even for an addition, wanted ADU. Because I think it's very difficult, to me at least, uh, if you have a residential lot, it, they can be very small. It's very hard to rely upon some sort of a, a natural buffer certainly. To me, there almost have to be some requirement for aesthetic treatment of such boxes to be used in a residential area, irregardless of what might be there as a, say a natural buffer, uh, which might be temporary.
Are you suggesting um, like design, specific design standards like we have for form-based code for Conex boxes below certain sizes or above?
I think I'd get back to the first concern I had that you can buy various types of sheds that are stick-built, uh, some uh, other materials as well. But when I think of a steel box, it, to me, it's quite different than a uh, a shed that is purchased that has aesthetic qualities built into it. I think it's gonna be very hard to police, and it gets back to the question again, what is the permitting requirements?
I do think it, it is difficult as an enforcement, someone charged with enforcing whether or not a box matches the characteristics of the surrounding structures. I think that's pretty ambiguous to people, you know, like, is it the same color? Does that mean that it meets the standard? Uh, should it have vinyl siding? Should it be wooden? If there's cabins in the area, you know, those sorts of things are pretty ambiguous. So I, I mean, we can definitely go back to the drawing board and, and try and come up with design standards that are more specific. I don't know that... I don't know that we'll come up with anything. We have to look and see what other communities have done and see if there are actual design standards out there for these. I think it was kind of where we'd have to start.
I, I think Bob, you, you hit the nail on the head. I mean, just having a requirement that the all shipping containers are Conba- Conex boxes um, need to be uh, altered in appearance to resemble the characteristics of the surrounding structures, I think. You know, that could be added language that the board adds to this and, and goes from there. You know, having any kind of complex design standards for these Conex boxes, we're not gonna move any of the um, it'll be more, I, I can't say that. It'll be more difficult to move the, the public to adhere to the ordinance um, if we come up with a real complex process to this, but um, you know, we'll, we'll consider anything the board comes up with at this point.
I fully understand that, but I guess I'm at a position that uh, I understood that 14 was gonna apply to commercial, industrial, and this was brought forward to us from one particular party that has a, a large parcel, they do have stor- structure. Eyes, yes, um, some of that property, there may be some natural uh, buffering and that if they had some that were close to a residential boundary line, that they'd have to maybe do some more aesthetic treatment of those boxes. I continue to have, and I guess I would uh, I'd be very uncomfortable voting in favor of 14 as written.
Question on that, um, visible from neighboring properties. Uh, so they would have to use like non-deciduous trees and stuff, the conifers or something and the like to, that are year-round buffering?
Yes.
And this is, we're, we're talking specifically those that are used as storage space?
Yes, under the ordinance, yep, under this chapter.
And because I, I see there's a lot of exceptions for temporary living space, temporary this, temporary that. So those, but if we're specifically talking shipping containers and Conex boxes, those don't fall into the temporary living space. It's really just, the, the only reason that we can have them is for storage.
That's correct. I mean, they, you could modify these to a house, but they would be, it would be significant engineered plans that would go through a
Right.
a rigorous process uh, by our code enforcement, um, to make sure that it, you know, adheres to the residential building code.
Okay.
Or if, and if you're in a specific zone, you know, like form-based code adds, you'll have to have specific facade features that, that would be required.
And are they, are these generally a reuse of like retired boxes?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty much all recycled boxes that, you know, really were used um, significantly through the, the Gulf War and the Afghanistan wars that came back to the states and that they recycle those.
There's a benefit to that, where you're not manufacturing new stuff, you're just reusing. Any further discussion or questions for staff? We're still at that phase.
Yeah, I guess the only thing that I would look, um, so with regard to the packet, our rec- our recommendation, consider feedback from the public and then send a recommended text. Do we have specific? Usually we have us actually suggested like verbiage, but I guess in this case, we would, if we were interested, we would just make a motion to forward, yeah.
Just forwarding a recommendation.
Right.
I apologize, I didn't type that out.
Okay.
Clearly in the staff report. I apologize for that. I'm like, what is he, oh my gosh, I didn't do that.
That's fine.
Yes, one other question. Going to 12, uh, is there a definition for space trailers?
There is.
Yeah, it kind of defines itself at the end of it.
Yeah.
So for the purpose of this chapter, the term "storage box" or "space trailer" means fully enclosed structure manufactured for storage use only.
It might be like in- It would help if I spelled "space" right.
Trailers used on construction sites, they're more of an office space than... So they-
Wouldn't those just be considered temporary, though?
So you're referring to one of the sections up above?
Right, those are-
Number five.
Yeah, number five or number six for construction sites, yep.
Okay, thank you.
That would be exempt. And I think Dave, David alluded to this earlier. This is really specifically for storage. It's not for anything else, no other uses. It's really another means of storage, of storing equipment or materials or lawn mowers or what what have you, whatever people put in them. Yeah, it's just storage. There's no other uses considered. They would still have to, you know, meet the setback requirements for an accessory structure that's required in the ordinance based on the zoning, so. And then, in addition to that, regardless of the size, there's typically an exemption. If there's something that's under a certain amount of square footage, like, say, one hundred and twenty square feet, planning board did add language that requires a permit for every, every single Conex box. That gives us the ability to go on-site and to make sure that they adhere to these requirements, that, you know, they're, they're not creating, you know, an ugly or unsightly eyesight to the roadway or to in a butter. So that's gonna be taken into consideration in their approval process every single time through a permit. So we'll have a, we're gonna get eyes on every, for every single Conex box that's in the city. We'll have eyes on and input to that based on planning board's recommendation in this ordinance language.
With regard to the permit, what's the, is there a usual fee associated with those?
Yeah, there's, there's a, there is a fee. I don't know the number off the top of my head. I don't process permit fees very often, so I'd have to look at it.
So there would be something associated with it?
Yep.
With, and these are off, I mean, granted, I think the intention here is that it's set in a location and then that's where it will reside. In theory, they're quasi-portable, correct?
That's correct, just like any, you know, any shed that you buy, it's quasi-portable.
True.
So, yep.
Okay.
Whatever's there on April is what will be on the tax records. They'll go out and see that it's there. They get a copy, they'll get a copy of the building permit, so they'll have an idea that of where they are in the city, but I know one of the questions the board had was about taxable value and those sorts of things, so that's gonna be difficult, depending on how long they're staying in one area.
Okay, are we good with questions for staff? Okay, and I'll seek a motion for, to open public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? No Conex box talkers. Okay, then I'll seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so we either need to, we need to vote to recommend this or not. So I would need a, I don't even need a motion for that, do I? Do I?
Yeah, you would need a motion.
Okay. So. I need a motion then to be in favor or not in favor, either way? Of a recommendation?
I'll make a motion that the planning board send a favorable recommendation on the text change to City Council related to edits established in Section sixty-six-six-six.
Does that work?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Five to one. Okay, that was eight. Okay, items nine and ten, we're gonna kind of cover together, but we'll have a separate public comment and a separate vote on each one. There's a text amendment and a map amendment to the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district. You guys okay with that? Okay, with that, I'd like to staff to review the proposals.
So the first piece I want to cover is the text amendments related to Lake Auburn watershed overlay district. And then the second item that we'll cover is the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district agricultural buffer setback map. I know that there was a couple of questions in the last planning board meeting for clarification. One is that I understand Riley made a recommendation of some language that was not included in your packet, but we did include it and that was the, if you could help me with the and/or the-
Oh, it was in regards to the director or who? From time to time.
From time to time?
Yeah.
If we could bring that up, we've made those edits, but I just want to make sure that it, that's clarified for the board, that that was a mission on my part. We did have legal counsel look at the language that was spelled out. That was a little bit of, a little funky on on some of the language and the the process of the way that it's written isn't in logical order and it really identifies the problem and then gives you the resolve of a thousand square feet that's required for the buffers and the requirements for an agricultural facility. So we've identified those two items. And other than that, all the language, the mapping and everything is the same. We could certainly review. Any additional or any item that you wanted specifically cover in the text and we can boil it, we could drill down to the section and go through it. Again, under Section sixty-nine-five-one, we, we went through a lot of definitions. And in addition to what we have done is that we've, we've now merged all the additional language that you've already approved and then went through council for the, you know, the septic system changes and all those definitions. All that now has been merged. What you're looking at is the final version of the redline version of what would be going for editing for our codification. So this is all one document. You know, even if you went to the back, you can see some of the, pick up some of the more important pieces that we covered. For dimensional setbacks, the hundred, the hundred feet, we had seventy-five feet there. That just shows you we've now merged the original information that was approved by planning board on the first round for the septic systems. Now we've merged it with the ag. So this is all now part of the definitions and Division four in the Chapter sixty. So it does look a little bit different than the last time you looked at it, because it didn't have these changes. And it was a little bit confusing. So what we did was we, we adopted all the, the language changes from the last one and then added the new agricultural pieces. I'm happy to, you know, cover any of the definitions that we have. I'm happy to cover any of the use in environmental regulations that we had under, you know, Chapter two, agricultural forestry and erosion control. If you, if planning board wants to drill down into it, again, none of the, none of the language changed other than the one time to time. Other than that, it's one hundred percent exactly what we looked at the last time. And we went through a significant PowerPoint presentation. At that point, we could bring that PowerPoint presentation back up and drill down to anything that was covered, but happy to answer any questions from the board regarding the text changes.
John, the only change from last time to this time was that from time to time, because I thought I also heard that there was additional agricultural language put in, but that must, that was, you were referring to last time?
No, I'm referring to the original, the first time, and I say the first time, it's, it's all of the septic systems changes that we made, additional definitions, additions to the the environmental regulations within this chapter.
Right.
And then the, all the additional setback requirements that's found in the enforcement piece and the setback requirements that are found in the shoreline zoning that was added in, under the first round of approvals that already went to council. Once the second reading occurs, it's, it's essentially ordinance at that point. So we added all that language in here and you're looking at that. It's, it appears as black text because it's already been approved. It's already codified.
Okay.
But it, I just want, I just wanted to note that it's, it looks different than the last time that you looked at it from that standpoint, from a structural standpoint.
Okay, that's what you meant, okay.
For text, yep.
Okay. I didn't know if I should be reading things that are, that were, were new additions from the last time we talked.
Nothing was new, no, not for additional for agricultural uses.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, and this isn't to make a change, but a question about clearcutting, and this will help it if, in the future, if we have stuff come in front of us. The thirty square feet of land that has to be covered for not to be considered a clear cut, right?
Is it thirty or is it thirty thousand square feet? What's the, I guess what?
Well, it says, so trees over four and a half inches in diameter, measured at four and a half feet above the ground of less than thirty square feet per acre.
What section are you in?
Right on the front page of Page one. It gives a definition of clearcutting. It's the basal area.
Okay.
It's in blue.
Yep, that's, that's the state law definition.
So what's the thirty square feet? Like, putting?
That's the percentage of the ground that has to remain open, right?
Yeah, so so thirty, thirty square feet per acre. So if they have less than thirty feet, square feet per acre left over of any kind of basal area with trees greater than this size, then it's considered a clear cut. So essentially, if they're taking all of the, the easiest way to define it is if they're taking all the mature trees within an acre for harvesting, that's considered a clear cut. So if you, if you've got very small trees, say, four and a half inches in diameter, you let those standing, that doesn't count. Any mature trees over that, so essentially, if you, if you cut them all, it's considered a clear cut.
But if you leave thirty square feet, it's not, I'm still, I'm with you, I just don't under- How does the thirty square feet per acre come into play?
Like, what are you measuring?
So that's the, the basal area is the, is the lateral branches of any particular tree, so if it's got, if it's bigger than thirty feet, then, then that, that would, would count under that circumstance. You're really-
Gotcha.
Getting, scratching my memory from college now.
That's right.
For something that-
There's a lot of words in there that I'm-
Thirty-five years, but cruising timber was something that I did learn about, but yeah, so it's, and it's really, the easiest way that I define it, if I was out there to do a site visit, if that, if there was standing timber less than, than four and a half inches in diameter that was just left over, that's all that was left over, I would consider that a clear cut under the definition.
And we might be able to hear more about that in the public comment.
Yep. I'm sure this subject matter expert behind me, that could certainly-
Yes, there is.
Add to that.
Okay, and then the other one, the two hundred and fifty feet on either side of the streams and stuff like that. So that's a five-hundred-foot swath? If you're going on both sides of a stream?
Yeah, so those are, those are setbacks. Those, those can be, you know, and again, I would defer to the U.S. State Forest Service on this, but those are more restricted. Those are based on our setback maps. That could be more restrictive than the State Forest Service.
That was mostly referring to, like, tilling and actual cutting, removing the forest-
Right.
Growth, right?
That's correct, yep.
But you could do other things in there.
I will say this, when it comes to forestry practices, and it's specifically in the, in the watershed, the plans are written by a licensed forester, a state licensed forester, and the plans are reviewed by a licensed forester. So you know, staff's not doing these reviews on this particular case in a vacuum where we're not subject matter experts and we recognize that. And we're relying on, on other people to write the plans for us. Then we provide that, it's, and this is requirements in the ordinance, and then we provide that to the, you know, to the Lake Commission, the watershed commission, and they provide a third-party inspector to review or licensed forester review the plan and make sure that it's meeting all their ordinance requirements and specifically the state requirements on, on harvesting practices.
Is there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open up to public comment. So I'll seek a motion to do that.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Okay, if you'd like to address the board, step up to the podium, state your name, address, and you have five minutes to address the board. Good evening, Mr. Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephen Beal, five-seventy-five Johnson Road. I'd like to address three matters briefly. First, one is a procedural matter. When the notice of this public hearing went out from the city on September twentieth, there was a paragraph that was unfortunately included that should not have been saying that those receiving the notice who- that those receiving the notice who are landowners or are butters were receiving it because your property has been identified as being located within five hundred feet of the proposed residential development. A sketch map of the parcel where the project is proposed is located below. That's totally inapposite to this situation, should not have been included. I think Mr. Blay will concur in that. This is a text amendment to the ordinance only. It does not apply to any particular parcel or project. Would you say that orally, John?
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay. Secondly, I wanted to explain just a little bit why this is so late in getting to you after the septic and the inspection program components of the watershed ordinance amendments. We had, there were two groups working, one on the septic and inspection part. There was another subgroup working on this forestry and agriculture part. The septic and inspection part got through their work first and that matter came before this board, I think back in June, and was finally approved by the council in July. The, that group then returned and worked with the other subgroup on the agriculture and forestry parts. We had the ordinance ready to go at the end of May when we discovered to our chagrin that any, there's a state statute requiring that any municipality that proposes to enact or amend an ordinance affecting forestry has to involve Maine Forest Service in the drafting of the ordinance. So we went and contacted Maine Forest Service and they did not want to waive that requirement. They decided they would like to participate, but due to vacations and bureaucratic delays, we didn't get that discussion with Maine Forest Service until August fifteen. Mr. Blay, Mr. Griswold, Dave Griswold, who is a licensed forester, and I participated in that call. Mr. Griswold and I both formerly worked for pulp and paper companies and were both individually owners of large woodlots, so we have some experience in this area. So the Forest Service liked our ordinance and they added only one additional requirement, which is on Page Seven of the ordinance. We'd referred to certain forest practices under the Maine Forest Practices Act and they said, actually, it's under Rule Twenty adopted pursuant to the Maine Forest Practices Act. And that's the only change they made. We asked them at one point, somebody did, whether they would endorse our ordinance and they said, no, we can't endorse your ordinance because it's more restrictive than the state statute. So this is an ordinance that was designed for the watershed. It's more restrictive than the state requirements. But Mr. Griswold and I, as people who own commercial woodlots, both believe that the restrictions in it do not impair the operation of a successful harvest operation in the watershed. Finally, I'd like to comment on some remarks that Mr. Trask made at the workshop last month. And this gets back to the point that Mr. Blay made a few minutes ago about the exception for the nutrient and waste management plans with a threshold of a one thousand foot requirement. And I believe that, that the last meeting, Mr. Trask had suggested that that ought to be put higher up, further toward the front of the ordinance. This is on Page Four of the ordinance. And the reason why it's drafted as it is, is because it's standard drafting practice when you're preparing a statute or an ordinance to lay forth first affirmatively what the statute or ordinance does cover and then leave to a later paragraph the exceptions. In this case, it's strictly a dimensional requirement or provision which creates an exception. So that's the reason why the ordinance was drafted as it is. Tell what it does cover first and then state what the exception to this coverage is. Those are the remarks that I had. I could say something further about clear cutting if you want, but if not, I'll sit down rapidly.
Okay. I'm satisfied. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? So that was for item nine. I, I should have said that when I opened that up. So we'll have another one for item ten after we do the deliberation and votes for item nine, which is just for the text stuff. So is there any comments or? Oh, we have to close it, don't we? Seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, Amanda.
Of course.
So any deliberation or discussion or responses to public comment or anything?
What was the reference on Page Seven that the Forest Service looked to change? I know it was on Page Seven, but there's a lot of red on Page Seven.
I'm okay with the public commenter helping. And you wanted to know which?
I just, yeah, and I don't know if Page Seven is, is up currently, but you know, is it?
I don't know that it's, yeah. I think this is seven.
It's within two agricultural forestry erosion control. And we've got A, B, C, and D and E.
This is a different draft from the one I was working on.
It is.
It's later on.
That, that's why I couldn't find it at first.
There it is.
Maybe it's not on? Okay. And what, what section is that? I can't see that.
Yeah, ours doesn't look like that.
Two?
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you looking for something? I wasn't looking at it on purpose, I promise. I was just trying to get that.
I'm thinking it might be two V, but?
It's in nine fifty-two, Sub Two. H.
H.
Yep, it's under erosion control. And it's, so it would be Paragraph Two under erosion control. It starts with tree clearing and forestry.
So on Page Ten?
Yeah, the caption is tree clearing and forestry. And the additional language, the reference to Rule Twenty is in line, line five.
Gotcha, okay. So do we need to incorporate that, John?
Yeah, we would want to add after Maine Forest Practices Act, Rule Twenty.
Okay.
That wouldn't contradict us as a city being more restrictive than what the Maine Forest had said though, correct?
No, it aligns with the Maine Forest Service and their rules. So it's specific to their rules, yeah.
Do we also need to note that part that we, that was, we talked about striking from earlier that's in here?
We, we do have it in the electronic version, so we could add it in this one as well, just so we have it for the public record from time to time. We could strike that as well in the recommendation. I wouldn't, the, these changes, what happened was when I merged the two documents, like unfortunately, I grabbed the wrong one that didn't add the Rule Twenty. There's multiple versions. And I wouldn't, this language was already in the, I covered this under the, the last presentation, so this isn't a substantial change to this text amendment that we're working with.
Mr. Beal, did you have something? How would we do that?
He can provide you a copy that you could utilize for specific language in the amendment for this rec, you know, for condition of the approval, a recommendation to the council.
Like later or now?
Now.
Please.
So just procedurally, it would be something where we would make an amendment to the proposed language and it would be what's written here, Mr. Beal's section and excluding the line that we struck and then a separate vote on whether or not to send along a favorable recommendation.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's Riley, oh, he left. Do we know where Riley's edits are on what page?
Oh, from the, from time to time?
Yeah.
Yes, those were on?
Are you guys comfortable just looking at it up there?
It was on Section sixty-nine fifty-two, two H I, or one.
Two?
Under, two H I. I believe it was an I and not the Roman numeral for one. It's under tree clearing and forestry.
It's under tree, so we're in the same section here? The, the time to time is in the same, oh, I see it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I see it.
You're right, yep. I made it a lot more confusing. I could have just said it's the same section.
Let me see, I think we agreed to basically just start with the director or their designated, right, they were just, I just wanted to make sure that I knew where you are from time to time was that we wanted to remove. And I, I found it.
So the idea was to remove, keep zooming in, remove from time to time and just start with the director?
Correct.
And then they added in the Rule Twenty thing.
So we just have to make a favorable motion referencing the, the language staff as?
In the digital version or something or just whatever, yeah.
Well, that could save a whole meeting. Whole another public hearing, if you will.
That was a good catch.
I'm assuming these aren't substantive enough to warrant another one?
Again, the, it wasn't the intention to omit those and they had been presented to the board, so, and they were recommendations from the board. The Forest Service one was one, obviously, that came out of the meeting as Mr. Beal indicated, but I was just working on two versions and I merged the wrong documents.
Okay, any questions about that? Megan, are you ready to proceed? You done typing?
I think so.
Okay. Then the procedural matter? I don't even remember what it was that Mr. Beal started with.
I think we just addressed it.
With regard to the background? I think it was a public, public notice error.
Yeah, it's just a public notice error.
So that's fine.
Nothing?
We send out notices for projects and there's text in there that carries over from project to project and it was accidentally carried over into.
Okay.
That was my fault, I apologize.
Thank you.
But we did get the right people.
We did get the right people, yes, yep.
Okay, so that should be taken care of and fine and all that, okay. Okay. Is there any more discussion? So with that, I'll seek a motion to recommend or approve the text amendment?
I was, I was going to ask how to phrase it correctly that we're citing the, the language that we just went over. Or are we saying that we don't need to because it was previously given to us and intended to be written?
That's correct. I think you could, I think the latest version is what we have digitally and that was reflection of the board and the recommendation from the Maine State Forest Service.
All right, in that case, I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to City Council to amend the text in Chapter Sixty, Article Two, General Provisions, Division Four, Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District, Section Sixty dash nine five one, Section Sixty dash nine five two, and Section Sixty dash nine five three, and Chapter Sixty, Article Seventeen, Division Two, Amendment to the zoning ordinance or zoning map.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes? Okay, and then item ten, we kind of did the presentation on that a little bit. John or staff, do you have anything else to say about the map?
Yeah, I think we should just, we'll bring up the map and we'll have, I think the board should just look at it one more time. It's, again, the same exact map that we presented to the board that we had before. It included all of our comments and this is what the committee came up with and like, this is a little bit different than the watershed map, so it, it's a, a separate resource map that staff can use for requirements for agricultural buffer setbacks.
I know that this was noted, it was created with data from the, well, it's inventory, published twenty twenty-three. How often are these updated and how is the, what is the actual process to determine, you know, whether or not this section is still even a viable section that needs to be incorporated in here? And how often will we be reviewing this?
So the, the baseline data will never change. This just references the baseline data, so if it does change, so for example, we're not, we wouldn't utilize that unless we went back for a map amendment. We came back through Planning Board and we went through that process. So if, if the National Wetlands Inventory, through their program, updated a map, we're not going to, we're not going to utilize that map. We're using the, this existing map as it sits today in that way there. So this, this information is not, it's static, it's very static information. It's what, what's, what was available today at the time when we made the map, the most recent one, and that's it. We're not, it doesn't flex with a change in the National Wetlands Inventory mapping. That, that would need to go back to the board for approval on that, so it just gives a baseline of where our information came from, so you could scribe it all the way back to, you know, its origination of, of where it came from.
Do you know how often the inventory is updated?
I don't know how, I don't know how often the, the data layers get updated. I think that, you know, with, with the changes in climate, some things may change over time, but it's not, and then what happens is that data gets more. what's the best term, the, I guess, you know, technology gets better and we're able to look at aerial photographs and define wetlands a little bit better, so they get redefined that way. Some of this original information is based on original aerial photographs and then overlaying that with woodland cover types and land cover types. They may have introduced in 2023, this data might have different vector information that could have more specific updated digital photos and elevation changes from LiDAR and all kinds of different types of technology that really comes down through the military and then gets de-escalated down into what's used by the U.S. Geological Survey.
But we don't have any process with which we will be revisiting this with some, with some timing in order to make sure that changes under change.
There's not. If there's a significant change, like, so for example, we had, we were referencing the nineteen ninety-one phosphorus manual until, till I got here and then we just recently updated it to the two thousand sixteen. So there was significant amount of time there that we used the data, that data for requiring phosphorus control. We were using old manuals and old standards, but on occasion, this stuff does need to be updated, but it could, it could go for a long period of time, could be ten, fifteen years before it's updated again, unless there's a specific request by the public and the reasons why, and then, you know, supported by council and the board, then it would be revisited at that point.
We're all set?
Okay, I'll seek a motion to open public comment on item ten.
So moved.
Tacked it.
All those in favor? Okay. Seeing nobody wants to speak about this, we'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. So. Any deliberation? Or any more questions? I think we kind of beat it up. We've met about this a lot of times and vetted it quite a bit. So with that, I'll seek the second motion to approve or recommend it to the City Council, the map amendment.
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to City Council to adopt the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District Agricultural Buffer Setbacks Map. The map is established for establishing a two hundred and fifty-foot setback to agricultural field tillage from natural resources and will be referred to in Chapter sixty, Article seven, Division four, Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District, and will be considered in accordance with Chapter sixty, Article seventeen, Division two, amendment to the zoning ordinance or zoning map.
Second.
I believe Riley, you said Article seven instead of twelve.
Apologies, I didn't mean to say Article twelve.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries. Okay. And that ends our voting for the evening. The item eleven is a workshop to discuss LD two thousand and three text amendment, specifically the possible limitation to ADU size. Staff?
And this for, okay, cool. So I'll start by giving just a brief overview of LD two thousand and three. I'm understanding that you guys have heard about this all before, so this isn't new information, but just in case the public's watching. So essentially, a few years ago in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, the state legislature passed a bill called LD two thousand and three, which focused on increasing the amount of affordable housing, or sorry, increasing the amount of housing in Maine, and they established some statewide goals. This was, this started out as one bill, which was LD two thousand and three, and then two other bills came later to kind of help set rulemaking and other things. But essentially, you must allow, by January of two thousand and twenty-four, we have to allow four units in the growth district, sorry, four, four units on any vacant lot in the growth district or lots served by public sewer and water. We have to allow up to two additional units on any lot. ADUs or accessory dwelling units have to be allowed on any lot a single-family dwelling is allowed on. It changes our parking requirements to allow for two spots for every three units for an affordable housing development. Affordable housing is classified as the rents or the sale price being at eighty percent of AMI. And there's also an affordable housing density bonus that allows any development where over fifty percent of the units are affordable to allow them two and a half times the density. And so as part of that, we are discussing some ordinance changes that will allow for, we are better defining accessory dwelling unit and they will not be larger than one thousand five hundred square feet. And we are looking at minimum lot sizes for areas in our ordinance that allow for single and two-family homes. And this will bring us into compliance with LD two thousand and three. And if, so tonight, we're asking for this to be a workshop, make some edits, and then go to a public hearing. And ultimately, we'd like to retroactively implement this for January first, so that we'll be in compliance with state law.
Just to, just to take this a little bit further, again, if we're looking at the third and fourth lot, this is really that institutes that additional density that's required. So the UR, for example, is a ten thousand square foot minimum. I believe Mr. Hayes may, may comment to this a couple of different times. This is coming directly from the city manager, that we're really gonna address anything that's more, or I should say, less restrictive than LD two thousand and three would be addressed in the future comprehensive plan. We're just establishing that right now with, with writing the proposal to hire someone to help us assist in the next eighteen months of writing the comprehensive plan. And with the committee, obviously, that, that's gonna be formed. That was talked about last night at, at council. So for example, UR is ten thousand, SR is twenty-four thousand square feet, essentially your half acre, LD CR is one acre minimum for that first house lot. So on that third and fourth house, you would have to have additional acreage in those, and it's established in the table that's found in there. And the low-density country residential is, is three acre minimum. So on that third and fourth house, you've got to have an additional three acres for each of those, each of those houses that are being proposed on the same lot. And then the AG RP is ten acre densities. So it would be an additional ten acres that's needed if you're gonna, you know, put that third home in there beyond the first two. And then the, as was mentioned before, we're minimizing the lot, the second ADU accessory dwelling unit to fifteen hundred square feet, which I think, you know, from an architectural standpoint, from an engineering standpoint, and just livability, fifteen hundred, you can still get three bedrooms, two baths. It's a pretty decent size. I think it's pretty generous in that regard. I don't see that we're gonna see a whole lot of ADUs that are bigger than that, but certainly we're, we're open from the board for any additions or comments to these text changes.
I just have one other comment that John just made me think of, and that's that even if the lot minimum is ten thousand square feet, if it's served by a septic system, it would have to be twenty thousand square feet. So they still have to meet the basic plumbing code for the state.
That, that's exterior plumbing code. Yep, that's correct.
So this is only in, as designated in the comp plan, the growth areas?
The four times the density would only be in the growth areas or areas served by both public sewer and water.
As, as we looked at it in previous meetings, is those, those areas interchange. Wherever we have growth areas, we have, you know, public sewer and water, essentially.
The last comp plan, I thought, yeah.
So the difference between the blue and the red text, I know we've, we've covered the red text quite extensively. Is it the blue text that is the proposed changes for tonight?
That's correct.
There was a, you mentioned that if we do these things, we will, will come into compliance. Are we out of compliance?
Currently, we are not in compliance with the state law because we would have had to have added things like the four dwelling units in the parking standard already, which is why we're retroactively dating this back to January first.
So the, so the workshops that we've had to date missed some of the pieces?
So the, what we had previously, we would not be not in compliance with state law. It's just that it's not the minimum. We were more, a little bit more aggressive than what LD two thousand and three said with our densities. So if, if we made these changes, we'll still be in compliance with LD two thousand and three in that regard. So technically, what Natalie is saying is that we should have, we should have had this done by January first, two thousand and twenty-four, and that's where we're essentially not in compliance.
Right, you're right. I, I get that. I was just looking specifically to the blue language as to whether or not without it, we are not in compliance. And I guess I'm, I mean, I know that we're not, because we, things haven't been improved, we got a back date, but if we did not include the blue language?
We'd still be in compliance with LD two thousand and three.
Okay. I don't know if you want to go first, area one, area two? I mean, I've got questions on both, but I don't know how we want to, do you care how we proceed?
No, I don't.
With regard to the ADU not being, being restricted to less than one thousand five hundred square feet, does LD two thousand and three actually define a maximum size for an ADU?
No, they will, they leave that to the municipality. They get to choose the size. I've seen them range anywhere from six hundred to two thousand square feet and also seen stipulations on whether or not that's living space or all space. Really, the town gets to decide how they want to define ADU and any maximums or minimums they want to put on them.
And we're still restricted by setbacks and all the other normal building restrictions, correct?
So all lots, yes, all the, the only thing this affects is density. It does not affect any of the lot minimums, sorry, the setbacks of any sorts.
Okay. I guess I, I see absolutely no reason to set a maximum and that, in my opinion, if there's room and it fits within the other definitions of what an ADU is, then why should we be telling people what they can and can't build? So that's just where I stand on that first one.
I will say that we did, we did have this language already incorporated into the area that's part of the Taylor Pond Watershed. So this is, a lot of this is adopted language that we've already had that we're just, you know, putting it forth throughout the whole entire city. It's just a, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. It's just that, I just wanted to note that, public, that the board has identified this density in the Taylor Pond Watershed already, so.
With regard to, Bob, do you have, I don't want to hog the mic here.
No, I guess I was thinking of what you said. I guess the reason that we're really kind of looking for additional dwelling units or consideration of such is also to look at affordability and it's really to allow maybe for a young family to be able to build something on the family's property or the other way around, maybe the younger family going into the homestead, we're looking for, so I think if we're thinking of additional dwelling unit to meet affordability housing requirements, I think maybe, and recognizing too, that a lot of our lots are fairly small and that it does become a crowding situation if we look at two full-size houses now on what we thought was acceptable as having one. So I guess to me, at least until we go through the comprehensive planning process, I guess I'd rather keep it with the idea of trying to reach also the affordability goal as well.
I get, and I appreciate that. To me, the affordability is based on what the property owner and homeowner wants to put there, not what we as a board want to dictate. So that's just my personal opinion on that.
I agree with Dave. I would suggest that if we have the additional dwelling unit not exceed a larger square footage than the original dwelling unit and not limited it, but just have it not bigger than the original home. But I think affordability is different per household. It's always gonna be like that.
I do like that suggestion because at least that keeps the character of a neighborhood pretty much in lock.
With regard to area two, being that requiring the same lot size for each additional unit as required for the first unit, how does that impact road frontage setbacks, that type of thing? We've talked a lot about skinny lots and where we can build and does that incorporate that the same road frontage would need to be available in order to build those additional units?
What, what are you referring to, Dave?
So area two, the second piece, where we're talking about restricting residential zones, editing the draft to require the same lot size for each additional unit as is required for the first unit. With regard to, you know, these odd-shaped lots and everything else, how do we, how do you incorporate road frontage, you know, for driveway and everything else incorporated into that?
So road frontage does not apply here. So as long as you're meeting the standard for the current lot, then, then you're all set. You just need to have the land mass to, to meet the density requirement. So we're not, we're not addressing, we're not addressing the road frontage piece.
Okay, because I know at one point we talked about, you know, does it have to be, you know, how do we incorporate your road access, drive- do we incorporate, you know, road access, driveway access and everything else? There's a lot of conversations, so I just wanted to see how that factor did.
No. You know, and this this conversation comes up a lot, right, with with homeowners. They'll have a difficult time splitting a lot and selling off that individual house or that ADU because now that all becomes one ownership. And without the road frontage, they won't be able to split that. So it'll be all under one ownership. So it could be up to four homes. They don't have the additional road frontage to split it, then it'll it'll be all under one ownership in that particular case.
Hmm, okay.
I I'll make one comment about the 1,500 square feet. I I don't mind the language that you propose. I just, as far as, you know, responding as staff, we're going to have to go back to every single lot. And we talked about this at length, and it for me, it's an equity issue that because they can your neighbor has a 2,000-square-foot home, well, they can put another 2,000-square-foot home, but you've got a you've got a 1,500-square-foot home, so you're only going to be limited to 1,500. So I took that into consideration, and then from a staff perspective and timing, you're going back to that lot. You've got to do an analysis. We got to make sure that the assessor's information is correct. It could be measurements there, could be an interpretation of square footage. Are we talking about square footage, footprint of the foundation? Are we talking about the foundation and attached porches or farmer's porches, blockways? You know, what are we defining that as? So we went with just 1,500 square feet from a, you know, from a staff perspective, it's a lot cleaner that way. And from an equity standpoint, we felt like that was the most equitable approach. So that's that's where we landed. There was a considerable amount of thought put into it in conversation in-house. And, you know, this really came down from the city manager's office, but I I truly believe that as we talk through this, that this is the this is a good approach and the most equitable approach.
I appreciate you adding that equitable piece, John, that that's good to consider. So for me, I guess I would just I have no interest in area one at all, in which case, to me, I don't think there should be a maximum. But I do understand and certainly could get behind some of the area two adjustments.
Would regarding the size limitations, would just not having a size limit be equitable?
Yeah, I think that I think we're open. I think, you know, this is an open conversation, right? It's a workshop. As staff, we're we're just we'll we'll take anything the planning board wants to provide. I I just gave you I'm just giving you like our inside conversation that we had. This is a workshop. We just I'm just speaking candidly. You know, I I like to, you know, get in Eric's office sometimes and just talk about talk this stuff through and what makes sense for the, you know, taxpayers of the city of Auburn. And that those are just some of the things that rose to the top that, you know what, I like I kind of liked where it landed. Some things are easier to accept and other things are more difficult. But we're going to we're going to go on whatever the board decides.
So like Bob had suggested it being kind of conforming with existing properties or buildings in the area. Has that been a part of the discussion?
That's not a current requirement if I decide to build a house, though, right? It doesn't have to I don't have to if I build a house on a new lot, I don't have to conform it to the neighborhood. So I guess I I wouldn't see that as an argument, but at least it would be an inconsistent one.
But I guess as the city manager's suggesting, this is just for a period of time, hopefully not too long, just allowing us to take a more thorough look through the comprehensive planning effort. And I think which will be starting soon, I think now the committee has been identified at least, and you're in the process of hiring.
Yeah, we're in the hire we're in the process of hiring a consultant. That's a that's a great point. This is consider this maybe consider this suggested language is fluid and and could change with with the direction in the new comprehensive plan.
Well, I to me, it's a it is a great point because if we do have language coming forward in the in the updated plan, I don't see a need to make a change to then make another change. And that just, to me, potentially causes additional confusion as to where are we and what are our rules and what are our limits? So to me, the fact that we're coming up and doing the comprehensive plan, to me, says I don't see a need to change this to then but then change it again. So again, I go back to I don't see a need to incorporate a maximum and let the let the lot and, you know, if the if the homeowner feels that they, you know, that whatever the tax change is going to be because of the additional ADU, if they can afford it and it fits with them, they comply with all the other requirements of the lot, then let them build what they want to build.
I guess just going back, I think we talked about, you know, something mentioned about a suggested minimum, suggested maximum. Under LD 2003, there's not a minimum, maximum, but there's kind of a general acceptance that it shouldn't be less than or more than. I think you mentioned 800 to 2,000.
I was just giving you a range of what I've seen other municipalities use. I have not seen a municipality that didn't put a number on it, but that doesn't mean that you couldn't. LD 2003 does not. It allows the municipality to choose how they define accessory dwelling unit and if they're going to put any sort of size restrictions on it.
But you're saying most communities that you know of have done that?
Yes.
Could I suggest that part if I don't know, so we have a timeline as we're trying to get this out done by January, right? So I know how busy the next couple of months are, but is there an opportunity for another workshop perhaps? Or is this going to be the last workshop on this? Because anyway, I wouldn't mind if if we were if there are other examples of municipalities or and or if staff were to find a reason as to why most municipalities seem to include that. Because I do understand your argument seems restrictive, but if ever other municipalities doing it, there might be a reason why, and I would be interested in knowing what that would be.
I will say just from so I recently dug into a bunch of municipalities to try to set a number for Brunswick because that's where I was before I was here. And I'll say that it looks like most of these communities had maximums on them prior to LD 2003. It doesn't look like you guys have had this at all, so this is why this is new and setting a number might look weird or different. And I think that the number was because originally the intent of having an accessory dwelling unit would be to have a smaller unit on your lot, probably an in-law. It allowed for that to happen without it increasing really the density on your site. Where LD 2003's intent is really to increase the amount of housing stock. So some municipalities are keeping that small number because they don't necessarily want to increase the housing stock. So they're hoping to kind of limit it in the best way possible in the way that they can. So your intent might not be to do that, and which is why a number doesn't seem like a correct place, or maybe it does seem like a correct place. But I think that's where the intent and why that number ranges so much depending on the goals set by the municipality.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Natalie. That's.
And I think that that's why we keep referencing the new the new comp plan. The new comp plan will hopefully define that which direction that we're going.
Right.
And right now, the 1,500 feet is a square feet, rather, is the is the placeholder. We haven't had a lot of ADUs, so we did the research on the number of ADUs since we passed the ordinance. And when I first got here, I think Egan may have even still been here then, I think we've only had three. They haven't been bigger than the existing home. They've all all been smaller. And it seems like the 1,500 really fits into that fits into that definition pretty good. And I again, at the end of the day, it's still going to be can be a three-bedroom, two-bath home. It's very generous home. And with the building cost today, an ADU at 15,000 square feet is still going to run you, you know, $320,000, $400,000. So, you know, I'm, you know, from my perspective, it's a very comfortable number, but again, we'd go with anything that the board decides. And we would probably present this as a as a public hearing, and then we make a favorable or non-favorable recommendation to council. And that's that's where basically where we land at.
I think I've heard enough, but I haven't heard from Darren. I want to see. What do you got? There's only six of us, so and this is kind of a big deal, so it favor a limit or anything?
I think the I think the the limit is a good idea.
Okay.
I guess I would just go back to not having it exceed the square footage of the original home and not limit it.
So we're very much not in consensus.
That's a reason we take it to public hearing to get the public to speak to it.
And then we can up and down vote in different parts of it in the public hearing.
Yeah, and I think I think Riley brings up a great point. We could structure it that way. We could have we could have two separate votes in this particular. We could look at the density individually as a public hearing, then we could look at the square footage individually as a public hearing and then have a vote for a recommendation to council. I think that that structures it very well and gives the opportunity to have the public weigh in on both items and then the the planning board weigh in on both items. We could we could certainly set up the public hearing that way.
I'd be I'd be in favor of that. Tying them together, I think, causes issues for me.
And then we might get more input from.
Yeah, I think you agree. It would simplify the process if it was two separate hearings.
Okay.
And actually, we're actually talking about two different things or different scenarios. If we're talking just about a lot with one additional dwelling unit, that's one thing. But if we're talking about somebody having the acreage and wanting to allow more housing, three or four, then I like the idea, then the beyond the allowed ADU under LD 2003, somebody wants to go to a higher density, as the lay-in now is proposed in the second part of what's before us, that those houses, yeah, we'd be preferable to have at the size maybe of the original. So you're creating a neighborhood still that are keeping a characteristic of size defined by the first building, first structure.
Okay. Can we move to area two now for discussion?
I thought we were discussing the whole thing. We've been discussing the whole thing.
Where have you been?
It sounded like we kind of got stuck on.
I guess I meant it's not two different things. I meant like one hearing on the definition of an ADU, and that would be when we'd address the limits. And then the the other residential zones could be dealt with in a separate hearing.
Do you have enough? Okay. So we'll move on to public comment. That's next. Okay, would anybody from the public like to address the board about matters that were not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 13 miscellaneous items.
Miscellaneous items. So next month, you'll see LD 2003 again. We have a project that is coming before you. Merit, Merit in the Westmane Ministry? It starts with an M. I apologize. It's nine o'clock at night. There's a project that was already approved by the planning board, and they want to make a small revision to the subdivision, and they don't need to come back before the planning board. It's something that we can do at a staff level, but the underwriter is really pushing to get the planning board to approve it, so they want to push it through that process. So I think it'll be a pretty simple one for you to review. And then I think those two and we have one more, or that was I think that's it. Yeah. It's going to be a light meeting next month, hopefully.
We'll see. Okay. We accomplished a lot this evening.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
I very much would.
I will give you a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor? We are closed. Adjourned, excuse me.
Thanks, Paul. You did a good job. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Getting there.